City of Stevens Point zoning board of appeals meeting, recorded November 18th, 2021.
All right, well, wel- welcome people for coming on this cold Thursday night. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting on November 18th, 2021. We can call the meeting to order at 17:01. We have a roll call, please, clerk. Is anybody clerking?
We have no.
I'll, I'll, I'll take it.
Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Um, I'm gonna not do well with names. George?
Doc Stater.
Doc Stater?
Here.
Gra- Gracia Day?
Here.
Lynn Markham?
Here.
Uh, Ishmaliya's on, on the, uh, on the virtual. And this is being recorded? And Bob War?
Here.
All right, all are in attendance? Mr. Chair?
All right, we have a discussion and possible action on the following. Report of January 30th, 2019, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Anybody have any questions with that? Or can I have a motion to approve? Move approval?
Second.
Move approval by Bob and seconded by Lynn? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes taken. Secondly is the report of the November 3rd, 2021, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. And that is up for discussion or can I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Uh, move, move for approval by Weir, seconded by Gracia Day. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. On the, number four is a request from Jordan Ploman?
Yes.
For a use variance to exceed the allowed number of unrelated persons residing within the single-family residential use at 1208 Reserve Street. And parcel number is under that.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could start the process and, uh, we'll go through some introductions quickly, uh, and then go through the process. And I'll kinda guide the board through that process.
That'd be very good, Mr. Dietrich, thank you.
Okay, thank you. First of all, my name is Dean Dietrich and I'm special counsel for the zoning board of appeals, uh, here today to assist the board in the conduct of this hearing. This is not a public hearing where we, uh, open all of the audience to be able to provide input. Rather, this is a hearing for the purpose of considering the information being presented both by the applicant and by the zoning department in response. After that information is presented, the zoning board of appeals will go into closed session where it will just be the zoning board of appeals and counsel for the purpose of deliberating regarding the request. We will come back into open session. It is likely that we will, uh, announce a decision at that time, but I'm not saying for sure. And then, uh, appropriate reporting forms will be prepared and submitted to the department for proper recording. The, uh, first, uh, thing I'd like to do is just go around this front area and do introductions so everybody knows who's he, who is whom. We're not gonna go through the whole audience on this, uh, but at least around the table. So, Bob, if you would, start that.
Bob Weir, I live on Second Street in the city. I've been on the zoning board of appeals for the last 20-plus years.
Uh, Ryan Karnowski, Director of Community Development for the city of Stevens Point. I'm just here to operate the computer.
And, and everybody understands Ryan will not be participating in deliberations and will not be making any presentation at the proceeding.
Correct.
Hi, I'm George Doc Stater. I've been appointed chair of the zoning board of appeals this year. I live at 1401 Wisconsin Street, Stevens Point.
My name is Gracia Day. I live on Union Street here in Stevens Point and I am a new appointee.
My name is Lynn Markham. I've been on the board of appeals for, I think, two or three years now. Um, and I live at 302 Georgia Street North.
Thank you. Um, why don't we start on that table and then at this table?
About to push this.
I don't think you have to pres- you have to push that.
Okay, my name is Jordan Ploman. I live at 1208 Reserve Street and I'm the owner.
I'm Travis Ploman, I'm Jordan's father.
I'm Andrew Beveridge, I'm the city attorney for Stevens Point.
I'm Adam Coon, I'm the zoning administrator for the city of Stevens Point.
Thank you very much. Again, as I indicated, this is not a public hearing, but rather an opportunity for presentation of information. Uh, at this time, I, I'm not going to be swearing in, uh, witnesses. If I, uh, feel that that's necessary, I may, uh, stop somebody from proceeding. I think what we are here today to do is simply to talk about information. Before we do that, however, I wanna go through a series of documents and have them marked into the, into the record. Um, as I indicated, this is being taped, taped or recorded, I should say, as part of the, uh, public broadcast, so that will be available as the record of this proceeding. Prior to the, uh, proceeding starting, uh, I distributed to all of the board members a copy of the relevant zoning districts, um, that, that are, um, in play here. I don't think the zoning board member on the, um, virtual has a copy of this, but it is, um, the R3 Single and, and Two Family Residence District and the R2 Standards. I'm gonna give a copy to both sides so they have them, so you know this is information that is in the city zoning ordinance. It's just copies of those documents, but it's important for the board to have that information, uh, for its deliberations as it may see fit. So, that'll be marked as exhibit one, uh, in this proceedings. We then turn to the, uh, packet of materials that has been presented to the, um, zoning board of appeals. And I've, uh, put them into an order that I think is, uh, probably the best step process for us to walk through. Exhibit two of this proceeding will be the application for a zone, zoning variance, which was submitted, uh, by Mr. Ploman, uh, for the request to exceed the number of allowed unrelated persons, uh, as noted in the agenda. That'll be marked as exhibit two in this hearing. Exhibit, uh, three will be the administrative staff report, which was submitted to the zoning board of appeals. It is, um, pages one through seven, pages 22 to 52, um, no, 20, 22 to 28 of the, um, packet that you have in front of you. That is the, uh, report from the Department of Community Development responding to the petition that was, application that was, uh, filed. That'll be marked as exhibit three. Exhibit four is a document that was in the packet of materials and it's dated February 12th of 2021. And it's a communication to Mr. Ploman from the, uh, Department of Community Development, uh, regarding the, uh, use of 1208 Reserve Street. That, uh, document is dated, uh, February 12th, 2021, and it's pages 45 and 46 of the packet that's in front of you. That'll be marked as exhibit four. Exhibit five is a one-page document. It's page 44 of the packet of materials and it is a, uh, September 16th, 2021 correspondence to Mr. Ploman from the Department of Community Development. That correspondence relates to the use of the property.
What's the exhibit number?
Uh, page 44.
Oh, the exhibit number?
Exhibit, that's exhibit five. Exhibit six is, uh, is three pages of information regarding the property at 1208 Reserve Street. Uh, it's the, from the 2021 property records for the city of Stevens Point. It's pages 47, uh, 48 of the packet that's in front of you. That'll be exhibit six, uh, in the proceeding. Exhibit seven is correspondence dated April 19th, 2021, from the Department of Community Development, uh, to, uh, Mr. Ploman. Uh, notice, non-compliance notice, vehicle parked on grass at the location. That document, uh, which is, um, it, it's pages 50 and 51, there actually is a, a third page attached to it, which, no, I'm sorry, there's not, it's two pages. That's gonna be exhibit seven. And exhibit eight is a one-page document, page 52, of the packet, which is a, a history of the property at 1208 Reserve Street. That will be marked as exhibit eight in this proceeding. So, you have the record that was provided to you. It's in a little bit different order, but the order that we have it set up here is, uh, designed to kinda follow, um, the important items bit for consideration regarding the application. Uh, previously, uh, I provided the zoning board of appeals with a copy of section 62.23 of the Wisconsin statutes relating to variances, a copy of section 23.05 of the city zoning ordinance, which, um, is the part of the zoning ordinance that relates to the zoning board of appeals. I also provided prior to the proceedings, a copy of the procedures that have been adopted by the commission, I'm sorry, the board of appeals, for the purpose of the conduct of, uh, a hearing, identifying the, um, background for the procedures to be followed here, uh, at this hearing. Uh, and also provided a copy of the template that the board has, um, considered in different forms, uh, previous for consideration of a, uh, decision regarding, uh, a variance. That form will be part of the discussions and deliberations of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, and finally, I provided background information to the zoning board of appeals regarding the standards for obtaining a zoning variance from a publication of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Those documents were provided, uh, as background information for the zoning board of appeals to consider as part of its deliberation process. They are not going to be part of the formal record of this proceeding, um, but they, uh, provide guidance to the board of appeals and they provide a procedure and a process for the board of appeals to follow. Just prior to the start of the, um, proceedings tonight, uh, I have been provided two written statements from, um, individuals who reside in the vicinity of the property in question. There were, uh, suggestions at one point in time that this would be a public hearing where anybody could talk, which is not what the process is of a hearing before a zoning board of appeals. What I intend to do, um, unless there are objections from, uh, either party for me to consider, what I intend to do is to distribute these statements prior to the close of the hearing portion, so they would be available for review by the zoning board of appeals. However, I would advise the zoning board of appeals that you are not obligated to take the information from these documents into, incorporate into any final decision of the zoning board of appeals. But in light of kinda the, the fact that there was an announcement about a public hearing, we're gonna make them, uh, available to the board at the end of the hearing portion of this meeting. So, um, please remind me to distribute that. With that, does the zoning board of appeals have any questions at this point in time?
I have what I think is just a clarification question. I assume we'll vote about going into closed session?
At the, at that time, yeah.
Correct, okay.
Um, all right, with that, before I, I open the floor, let me ask, uh, Mr. Ploman and, and Adam, do either of you have any questions before we start the process?
I just have one question. Um, before you actually make your decision, the zoning board, are you going to let the public speak at all?
We are not gonna let the public speak.
Okay.
He, he's allowed to call witnesses, however.
Yeah, you, you could call witnesses if you wish.
Okay.
But we are not gonna, uh, open it to an open forum.
So, does that occur after we present our, our cases?
It, it would occur as part of the presentation of your case.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, the one, um, more just a comment, uh, throughout the course of this week, city staff did receive additional forms of written testimony that I have here, so I don't know if now it would be appropriate to add it to the stack that you have that was received today or?
Yeah.
Is there just, is there one or several?
One copy for each correspondence.
Okay. Well, at this point in time, uh, the board members, um... After we conclude the hearing portion, we're gonna have a discussion in open session about the inclusion of all of these documents. And then the zoning board of appeals can decide.
I have a request and that is, could we have someone make copies of those so that if we do wanna consider them, we can each have a copy? So, we can actually read them? Could the police department?
I can try to see if someone's available. Sure.
Before we do that, I think some... This one we've got already. And this one we have, uh, a statement from, um... These three we don't, don't have duplicates, so if they could make five copies of each. We'll then discuss this after we do our formal hearing. Um, all right, thank you. With that then, um, Mr. Ploman, I'd like to turn it over to you to make, uh, an opening statement and provide information to the board of appeals and if you decide to call witnesses.
So, I just wanted to start by giving a little bit of background on, uh, who I am. I am currently a senior at UWSP. I'm majoring in finance and I'm economics minor. Um, on top of that, I've been a licensed real estate agent since the summer of 2019. So, a little bit of background on the house. I purchased the house in March of 2020 when I was 19-years-old. Um, I bought it with the intention of renting it out to college students that I knew personally. And when I bought the house, I understood that there are many college rentals in the area surrounding the property. And I had a conversation with the previous zoning administrator, basically asking if, if all these other rentals, do they need any kind of special classification or condition or use that lets them operate in the way they do? And the answer I got was no. This basically led me to believe that I didn't have to obtain any sort of special use or classification to operate as a college rental. A little bit of background on the actual real estate aspect of the house. Uh, the house was listed in November 22nd of 2019. It was on the market for approximately 69 days before it received an offer. And the asking price on 1208 Reserve Street was $189,900. I was able to purchase it for $175,000, which is $100 shy of $15,000 less than the asking price. And I'm pointing this out because I think that it's important to note that although this house was a beautiful and historic house, there was a reason it wasn't selling in a hot market. Given the odd layout of the house and the fact that it's over 100-years-old, uh, and due to its location that it's so close to campus, it was clear to me that it was not an ideal house for a single family to purchase to begin with. I wanna emphasize that although this home holds history, uh, it would need a very special buyer that would be willing to pay the price and deal with the issues that come with a house this old. As stated in my application, my intentions were to purchase the home, live in it while renting it to my college students, or college students that I have known previously, and improve the house while I lived in it. I began renting to my roommates and things were going smoothly. I was very clear to my roommates from the start that this house was a very nice house and it's a very nice house in general and for college students to be living in it especially. And I intend to maintain and improve the property. I was very strict on the basis that, that this is not a house for holding college-related activities, if you will. The only issues that arose during the first few months of renting were inevitable issues of plumbing that come with an old house. Uh, I have stayed on top of making repairs necessary and in comparison to a landlord who owns a property and rents it out to college students that they don't even know, uh, nor do they live at the house, I am able to be onsite instantly for issues that arise with the property and I'm surely incentivized to do so. I would also like to point out that I furnished and decorated the entire downstairs, not only for aesthetic purposes, but to further decrease the likelihood of my roommates acting carelessly in any fashion. As mentioned in the staff report, I received a call in February of 2021, six months into us occupying the property, about a supposed complaint of multiple cars in the driveway. I was open and honest with the zoning administrator from the start, confirming that four unrelated roommates occupied the house. As I stated, or as stated in the staff report, during the conversation, the zoning administrator mentioned the two-person limit for my household and said that I'm in violation of the ordinance. I asked the question, what about all these other college rentals in the area that are allowed to obviously have more than two unrelated people to occupy the house? To that, the answer I got was, I am unaware of that, but I will look into it. The zoning administrator told me that I would receive some sort of memo and notice in the mail from the city of Stevens Point describing my violation. As stated by the staff report, we did receive a letter from the city about one of my roommates parking partially on the match bed in front of my property. We corrected that quickly upon notice. However, the so-called notice of, uh, of the ordinance we were in violation of, which the zoning administrator stated that would come in the mail during our phone conversation in February, never arrived. I never received any kind of notice or documentation from the city regarding the violation, nor did I receive any kind of official notice of the date I was supposed to bring my property back into compliance, which stated in the staff report was May 31st, 2021. I wanna be very clear that I was still very confused on how I was violating a rule that somehow all of the other college rentals in my area were not being challenged for. Continuing the story chronologically, we finished up the school year and over the summer of 2021, I only had two people living in the house. To clarify, one roommate that was living in the house during the school year stayed for the summer and his brother moved in with him, uh, for a temporary Stevens Point internship. The rest of the roommates moved out for the summer. At the start of the semester, my roommates moved back in and we resumed occupying the house for the current year. Keep in mind that since February, when I had the phone conversation with the zoning administrator, I still did not receive any form of deadline or compliance on the violation that I was supposed to receive. One afternoon in, in September, I saw a community development vehicle parked outside my property, pulled over, and I was curious, so I went out and talked to him. It ended up being Mark Cordis in the vehicle and he told me he was taking pictures of the, the other college rental, which is directly next to my property and it also contains more than two unrelated people. And he was there due to a complaint that a couch was in the front yard. I told Mr. Cordis that I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't my property he was taking pictures of and I told him I wanted to make sure I wasn't doing anything wrong. He mentioned to me that due to my tight driveway, cars driving partially on the grass to park in the fashion that allows me to park cars without being parked off of a hardened surface as required by the city was not appealing, but technically didn't violate anything. I told him that I was hoping to fix this issue by expanding my driveway and he suggested that I give the zoning administrator a call. That is exactly what I did. I called the zoning administrator and set up a time for him to physically come out to my property and discuss the options for widening my driveway. The zoning administrator came out to my property on a Friday in mid-September while all my roommates were home, so the driveway was full of cars, and we discussed what the requirements were for driveway expansion. I told the zoning administrator that I wanna keep the curb appeal of the property as nice as possible and I was asking him what kind of options I have for making the driveway suitable for my situation. The driveway is large enough for cars to park on, but not large enough where the cars can enter and exit without partially driving on the grass. This was the issue that I was trying to remedy. After talking to the zoning administrator, it was pretty clear to me that due to the city's setback requirements on how close my driveway can be to my lot line, I essentially could not fix the issue to make my property more appealing. I want to point out that no part, no, I wanna point out that during no part of my face-to-face conversation with the zoning administrator, did he bring up anything about the two-person rule, the ordinance violation, nor mention anything other than the driveway. After meeting concluded on Friday, the following week, I received three documents from the zoning administrator. The first document was the one I was supposed to receive back in February, giving me the May 31st, 2021 deadline. The second document were, or the second two documents were explaining the family definition and giving me the new deadline of November 1st, 2021, to bring my property back into compliance. Receiving this letter shocked me. I immediately began to worry, what am I going to do since my roommates have leases until the end of May, 2022? How could I force them to basically be kicked out in the middle of the semester and where would they go? This brings me to my first standard of review when granting a variance, which is unnecessary hardship being present. As stated in the zoning administrator's staff report, he disregards my statement at the end of my second paragraph answering to the question of, of an unnecessary hardship. For a use variance, an unnecessary hardship exists only if the applicant shows that they would have no reason, or no reasonable use of the property without the variance. In my application, I clearly stated if I'm, if I am unable to rent the property, I would no longer be in a position to keep improving the property and would therefore not have a reasonable use of the property without this variance. Without this variance, I would be left to occupy a six-bedroom, 2,400-square-foot house by myself. I would be cut off from all rental income and I would no longer be in a position to make any improvements to the home. make any improvements to the home, and I would be occupying only one-sixth of the house. As mentioned in the staff report, it is up to the zoning board of appeals to determine whether or not that, whether or not you consider that reasonable. On top of what I view as satisfying the presence of an unnecessary hardship required for a use variance, another unnecessary hardship exists. Without this ordinance, not only would I be left alone to occupy the home, but my roommates would be forced out, out of their home that they have lived in, and in the start of freezing Wisconsin weather, struggle to find a last-minute place to live. According to the staff report, the zoning administrator states, options do exist for assisting impacted individuals in finding alternative housing. Example was stated the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point Dean's, Dean of Students Office. However, after reviewing UWSP's residential living page, you can only apply for a housing contract for this, for the spring 22 semester, or 2022 semester, meaning that until the spring semester starts, towards the end of January, housing on campus is not an option. Even if my roommates were able to find an option, the staff report completely disregards the fact that moving all of their furniture, clothes, and other belongings is not an easy task, especially when they are full-time college students, many of whom also have part-time jobs, and given that it is below 40 degrees outside. Although this may not be an unnecessary hardship according to the zoning code, you cannot tell me that that is not an unnecessary hardship in general. In the staff report, the zoning administrator directs the blame to me and states that the unnecessary hardship is self-created. This brings me to the next standard in granting a use variance, which is proving that the hardship is due to the physical limitations of the property and not the circumstances of the applicant. To start, if you view this issue at its face, it should be plainly obvious that the hardship is caused by physical limitations of the property. This home is considered a single-family home, and the fact that the single-family home comes with the rule of not allowing more than two unrelated people to live in the house is the physical limitation of the property that is creating my hardship. You could also consider the fact, which is, which as pointed out in the staff report, that my property has other physical limitations, including not having an appropriate lot size to be considered a two-family home, which would allow me to have four unrelated people if I could turn it to a two-family home. That is creating essentially the same hardship for me. When I bought the home, I was under the understanding that I could operate like other college rentals, being that I'm in the same district R3 as other rentals, and after my conversation with the former zoning administrator, which told me that rentals did not have any special classification or use, it was my intention that if the city required me to either change the conditional use of of the property, turn it into a two-family, or had any other process necessary to abide by their rules, then I would get it done. I did not understand any of the concept of the existing college rentals being grandfathered in, and until after finally receiving the official notice of the deadline to bring my property back into compliance in September, and I got, then I finally got a strong grasp on the entire situation after communicating with many individuals at the city, attorneys, and my next-door neighbor. After reading the staff report, it is obviously, or it is obvious that the zoning administrator is trying to paint a picture for the zoning board depicting that I received the notice back in, or I received the notice to bring my property under compliance in May 20, May of 2021, essentially turned my back on his orders on behalf of the city and continued to intentionally violate the ordinance. This is far from accurate. Like I said previously, I never got any form of documentation in February when I was supposed to regarding my deadline of the compliance. It was not until mid-September when I finally, finally received any kind of city documents. If I would have received the document back in February, why would I be here now in front of you in the, in the middle of November? If I was intentionally going against, or similarly, if I was intentionally going against the zoning administrator's direct orders to bring my property into compliance, why would I personally call him in September with the intention of having him come out to my physical property to inspect my driveway? This appeal process would have begun a lot sooner if I would have received the documents that I were supposed to get sent to me in February, and how can you accuse me of violating a deadline I never received? As stated in the staff report, I confirmed with the zoning administrator that there were four roommates besides me in the household. From the, from the beginning of this whole situation, I have done nothing but been an open and honest with my intentions of complying with the city of Stevens Point. As stated before, it is clear to see the physical limitations of the property are the root of my hardship, but claiming that this hardship is self-created is completely unfair, especially when I did not receive what I was supposed to. Had I known, I would have taken care of this a lot sooner, and I would not have been put in the time crunching position the zoning administrator has placed me in on figuring out where my roommates are going to stay for the remainder of their lease. If this hardship was created by anyone, it was created by the zoning administrator and his lack of consistency to distribute the appropriate information. The third and final standard of granting this variance is not harming public interest. As stated in the findings of the staff report, my intentions are to fix this property up as much as I possibly can and make it attractive for a single family to purchase when I'm ready to sell the property. I understand that a complaint was made by a previous older person who has since moved away. To my knowledge, no other complaints have been made, and I have never received any kind of noise complaint or any other form of nuisance to the neighborhood or area. I can agree with the fact that someone could be, someone could be concerned on the outside looking in based on my parking situation. The situation is not what it, what it may look like from the outside, and you need to know the context before judging a house by its driveway. This house has history, and I surely understand that. I, I find it very fascinating that my property has a page in the book called Houses, or Homes That Grew in Stevens Point. If you read my application thoroughly, you got a glimpse of some of my past and understand some of the things that drive me. I lost my mother at the age of nine. She was an architect and she graduated from UWSP with a degree in interior design. Before she passed, she taught me how to use CAD at a very young age. I was very interested in designing houses and taking after her and having a passion for design, architecture, and history of homes. I understand why the rule was created, to allow only two unrelated people to live in a single-family home. I agree with the motives of it. However, in my case, it has restricted me from pursuing what the rule was trying to accomplish in the first place. This is essentially preserving me, or restricting me from preserving the history of single-family homes in Stevens Point. With that being said, it is my full intention to take as good a care of the property as I can, making improvements while also being a good neighbor and allowing my fellow roommates to have a nice place to live while at work towards their degrees at UWSP. I've already invested over $10,000, as listed in my application, and I also included a list of other improvements I hope to accomplish in the near future. Granted that I am able to keep renting. You can also see firsthand that the condition of the property has not only been maintained well, but improved quite a bit in the before and after pictures I included in my application. Addressing the findings of the staff report, the zoning administrator is claiming that the lot size and family definition is in place to measure density in relation to the dwelling units needed to support the use and create and maintain the health, safety, morals, prosperity, aesthetics, general welfare, and general welfare of the community. How can this be utilized as an argument of harming public interest when the property directly next to mine is the same lot size yet is being utilized as a college rental with more than two unrelated people? This is true for most properties utilized as college rentals, having the same or smaller lot size than mine, and most of them having less square footage of actual house. Addressing the final paragraph of the report, I don't see how it is even relevant to note that we received a letter of one of my roommate's cars being parked ever so slightly on the mulch bed. This was not intentional and we fixed it right away. I would be willing to bet that on any given day, you could drive around the area and find a handful of cases where cars are partially parked off of a non-hardened surface. If I were not limited by the city's rules on setbacks, sorry, I escaped something. As stated before, I would be willing to fix the parking constraints if I were not limited by the city's rules and setbacks. I also do not see how my roommate's cars being parked at the property could possibly increase traffic on Reserve Street enough to harm the public interest. Regardless, if parking at the property was that much of an issue to public interest, wouldn't a better approach be to work with me on finding a different location for my roommates to park rather than trying to boot them out of their home? To wrap things up, I view that I have satisfied the three standards required to obtain this variance. There are multiple hardships present that I have brought in front of the board. The circumstances are due to the physical limitations of the property and due to the actions of the zoning administrator, and I believe that the public interest is in my support. I hope that this case sheds some light on, on some of the issues arising from the zoning code and decisions made to attempt to enforce them. In City Roll Moves article, Neighborhood Improvement Coordinator Mark Cordis stated, right now, as an enforcement entity of the code, if I go into a rental property or even a single-family home, I have to find out if people are blood relatives. How do you enforce that? I also think that's a little bit of a reach. There has to be a balance between the government, what the government's core responsibility is and what's reaching a little bit too far. Furthermore, regarding college rentals, I believe efforts should be redirected and spent towards inserting some standards and guidelines for existing college rentals. If the health, safety, morals, prosperity, aesthetics, and general welfare of the community is a concern, how come efforts are not being formed to, to provide these same standards for college students that are living in rentals that are in non-conforming? If anything, the situation I am in, where I am the landlord as well as owner occupying, incentivizes me to take more care of the property than a traditional landlord. Not only that, but as I mentioned in my application, my screening process for my tenants is much more diligent than any typical landlord. And that, that is considering that I do have to live with them. At this point, I would like to call a witness to the stand, Troy Durkey, my next-door neighbor.
We're going to have the witness come up here.
He can go to the podium, too.
May you provide a statement? Do you still want me to? Mine's probably one of the ones.
Yeah. He's asked you.
Yep.
Would you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear that the testimony provided in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
You need to get a microphone over to him.
Yeah.
If you put him at the podium.
Before we, before we start, I guess, I view that as kind of an opening statement. I don't know if you have any questions of him at this point. I don't know that he's going to be commenting any further. Mr. Beveridge, any, any questions?
I, I'm not sure if I have any questions at this moment. Obviously, I, you know, if we were going to, if the sense would be that declining to ask him questions right now would waive our ability to do so going forward, then I would need to consult with Mr. Kuhn briefly outside of the room.
I will give you the opportunity at the end to get to ask questions. Why don't you proceed? Go ahead.
Troy, if you just wanted to make a statement on how I've been as a neighbor.
First, if you could just state your name and your address into the record.
Okay. My name is Troy Durkey. I'm at 2032 Main Street. I'm Jordan's immediate neighbor.
Go ahead.
So let me ask this before I proceed with my, my comment. Am I to just answer the question, how he's been as a neighbor, or can I make a statement on my feelings about the whole situation?
I'm not sure I know the difference between, you've been, you've been identified as a neighbor.
Yep.
So you should answer questions as it relates to your being a neighbor to this property. I'm not sure I understand what else you would, what else would be the focus.
Well, as a neighbor to this property, I have concerns if a, the variance was granted, so, but I also would like to speak on behalf of them being wonderful neighbors. You know, so I.
If you want to speak about the situation as a neighbor, you can speak to all pieces of it.
Okay, all pieces. Okay. Jordan, Jordan and I have been in, is, this is a tough, a tough situation as a homeowner and a, and a neighbor. And Jordan and I have been in many conversations regarding this, so this will, my comments will be of no surprise to him, but let me start out, what I say a tough situation is, as a homeowner, as a, you know, I've got to look at the value of my property in a college town in which there are a number of rentals. And my concern that if a variance is granted, although while Jordan will be there, my understanding is it's long-term that this now that could become a permanent variance in which anybody can then take over the property and become a rental. So with that being stated, I, I'm against the proposal or the, the variance being approved. However, I would like to say Jordan and his roommates that are all here tonight are wonderful, wonderful neighbors. They're all very respectful. They maintain the property, and I think if I saw Jordan has put pictures, I've not been in the house, but I know he's been working on the house, so based on what, some pictures I did see, has improved it, maintains the outside, other than the driveway side, I won't, on the other side, so, but, but I think it's important, and oftentimes the students do get a bad rap of, of running down homes, and, and Jordan and the whole crew, they're all very respectful. When they do have gatherings, when they do do anything, the property is cleaned up and well-maintained in very short order. Noise, any of the things that you think of a college, typical college student house, they have been very good neighbors. So in that way, what I hope as a neighbor could come out of this is not approving the variance, but finding a way to temporarily allow them to continue, because I would hate these young men, you know, and I'll say to be out on the streets, I can't imagine how hard it a semester would be to, to find alternative housing, so.
You provided us email communication to Mr. Kuhn. Does your statement here today substitute or replace that?
Would, well, yeah, it's very similar, right? Because when I learned that, I didn't know witnesses were going to be, but I had learned that there was not going to be public comment, so I basically stated very, whoops, sorry, very similar to what that, so it could substitute, yes.
So for the zoning board of appeals, we're not going to consider this one as part of our discussion a little later. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else?
My next witness would be my father, Travis Plomin.
You have any, any questions?
No.
Why don't you come over here and, as we. Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that the testimony you provided in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes. Dad, if you could read the thing you prepared.
Yeah, I just prepared some, some brief notes about my perspective of Jordan's situation and what he's accomplished with this. Prior to the purchase of this home, he researched the use of the home, wanted to make sure that he was doing everything correctly, and that what he was planning to do with the property was acceptable to the city of Stevens Point. I think he did a fair job of doing that. His ability to purchase a home at a very young age, 19-year-old kid buying a house for 175 grand, it's quite an accomplishment for a 19-year-old kid. Not many 19-year-old kids can make that happen, and he, he's had the planning ability and the forethought to make that happen. When the parking issue arose, he never misled anybody. He always told the truth. He never lied to anybody at any time during any of this situation. He tried to resolve the parking issue. He did not deliberately skirt the rules or ignore them. He never got a letter in February. Jordan and I talk all the time. If, I guarantee I would have been the first phone call if he got a letter in February saying that he needed to comply by May 31st. That never happened. I believe that the action that's taking place does cause unnecessary hardship upon him. His tenants would be displaced with no desirable housing options at this time of year. I mean, you got five guys. I mean, you've got five guys sitting there that are going to be homeless if this doesn't get granted. He would be severely financially impacted, likely to force to sell the home, because he's not going to be able to afford it without the rental income. The listing history has shown that there is very little interest in this home as a single-family home. I'm a real estate broker myself. We looked at several homes in Stevens Point before he selected this one. This house is directly across from Old Main. It is closer to campus than some of the dormitories are, so it is right in the heart up there. He has no reasonable use for the size of the home without the variance. There have been no police calls, no disturbances, anything that would suggest that he's, what's the word, undesirable neighbor. He lives on the property, and I think that is so key to this whole discussion, is that he lives there. This is not a landlord situation where it's just a bunch of college kids living in a house and they're doing whatever they want to do. I watched the November 3 meeting where the city attorney talks about applying the law and how you folks are supposed to apply the law to this situation. It makes me question, what's the purpose of an appeal if it's just going to be as black as white as applying the law? Everything that Jordan has said here tonight are things that should be considered. This is a unique situation, and I would ask the board to consider at least granting the variance for the time that Jordan owns the property. If he sells the property, then the variance no longer be in effect. But I think that would address Mr. Durkey's concern, and I don't know who else has complained. So that's what I have to say about it. I think he's done a very good job here, a really good thing for that particular house, and to cause him a hardship would be unnecessary.
Any questions, Mr. Kuhn?
I don't.
No.
Okay. Did you want him to say anything else?
No.
Anything else?
If my roommate, Adam, wanted to make a comment.
If you, calling him as a witness, if he would come up.
I have no further witnesses.
All right, thank you. Does the Zoning Board of Appeals have any questions? Yes, Robert?
I have a question for the applicant. There are several questions, as a matter of fact. You mentioned during your oral testimony, and you also mentioned on your application form, the improvements you made to your property?
Yes.
On page 35 of 52, let's see, you indicated new toilets, sink, vanity, windows, et cetera.
Yes, so...
My question is, were any building permits requested in the city?
No, there were not for the interior improvement of the bathroom.
How about the water heater?
What, I'm sorry, what did you say?
How about the water heater?
The water heater, it was...
You've got a new Bradford White 50-gallon water heater.
Yes, it was done by Excel Plumbing, so if they, it's, my understanding is that they request out the permit.
That's what I'm familiar with, whenever, now that we have that ordinance in place, anytime you do have a new water heater put in, the installer is taking care of the request.
Well, no, I was just wondering, because I didn't see anything on the accessory data sheet of any building permits. What did you mean in, on page 37, I guess it is, the lower, or the next to last paragraph, you made a statement after conversation with multiple individuals at the city, as well as attorneys and neighbors, and my grasp of understanding on this situation, I am in, I am in is way deep that when I originally bought the house.
What I mean by that is, like I said before, I did not understand at all the whole zoning code that basically allows for existing non-conforming uses to keep operating in the way that they do. Now I have an understanding of that after receiving those documents that I said I received in September. I quickly jumped on and I was calling anyone that would basically pick up the phone and tell me what is going on, because I did not get a clear explanation of the whole grandfathered-in college rental system. So when I say that I, I'm saying that my knowledge of the situation I'm in is a lot deeper than it was, say, when I first purchased the house, and up until September, my knowledge of the whole situation of the grandfathered-in status was basically nonexistent.
Okay, but you also stated that prior to purchase, I want to make sure I understand at least, prior to purchase, did you speak to anyone at City Hall, zoning administrator or anybody regarding what could be done with that property, i.e., whether it could be a college rental, whether it could be molly family, whether it could be bed and breakfast?
Yes, so my conversation with the previous zoning administrator, we were basically working out what options are available, but we never, the last conversation I had with the previous zoning administrator, as I stated, he said, I asked him the question, do I have to have any sort of special use or classification to operate as a college rental, like the other ones are, directly next to me and down the roads, college, Briggs, all of those college rentals? And he said no. He said that they don't have any sort of special classification or use. They are just allowed to operate, and he did not explain to me the whole grandfathered-in part. He just said that they don't have any special use. But upon further knowledge now, the reason that they're allowed to operate in the way that they do is because of the grandfathered-in status.
And that was prior to your purchase on March 9th of 2020, is that correct?
I have a related question. Do you have any correspondence from this past zoning administrator on this topic?
What do you mean by correspondence?
Do you have any letters, anything in writing?
It was all over the phone, just a couple of phone conversations, and that was it.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Actually, I do have one.
Go ahead, please.
And this is actually a question for staff, but does the city have any letters on file from the past zoning administrator?
Not that I recall, no.
To Mr. Plowman?
No.
Okay.
Does any zoning board member have any other questions?
Bob, are you finished?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, I got a couple of questions for you, Jordan. You stated at the start of this meeting that you received advice from a, was it the Realtor that you bought the house from, that you didn't need any special zoning?
I was the Realtor.
You were the Realtor, who did you buy it from?
Peter Harris was the listing agent.
Okay, and Peter said that there weren't any special zoning requirements?
No.
Just...
Well, wait, now, did no meaning, did she, did that person say something or not?
Peter Harris did not mention anything about me needing to obtain any sort of special variance or anything to operate as a college rental, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what you stated.
Yeah, no, I think he was referring to statements from the former zoning administrator.
Second question, when do you graduate?
May.
This May?
This May.
How old, do you have juniors and seniors living with you, sophomores?
They're, well, yeah. One's graduating in this semester, and then the rest are either, I think the rest are juniors, so.
And how long will you be, are you going to try to finish your improvements after you graduate and then sell the house to try to get back into single-family, or are you going to continue as a resident and rent it?
It is essentially up to the zoning board what I can do. The bare minimum is I just want to get to the end. I want to get to May 2022, and if we can do that, essentially whatever you have to do to get there, that's what I'm asking. Now furthermore, if I am able to rent it past May of 2022, then that will allow me to improve the property more. It will allow me to invest more money into it, but again, it's up to the zoning board to determine whether or not you intend for me to do that, or if you want to see the property sold faster, I guess. You know, like I said, I'm compliant and I'm willing to work with the city, but I need, I need until May of 2022, and I can't stress that enough.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Then if I may, first for the board members, in going through my materials, I failed to identify a letter that's also dated September 16th of 2021 called Non-Compliance Notice. It's on pages 42 and 43. I'm marking that as Exhibit 5A, which has, it has the same date as Exhibit 5. I would like to ask Mr. Plowman, I just want to make sure that the record is clear here. We marked as Exhibit 4, February 12, 2021 correspondence from the Department of Community Development, Mr. Kuhn, to you at the 1208 Reserve Street address regarding the family definition violation. Is it my understanding your statements here today to the Zoning Board of Appeals is you never saw that?
I never received any kind of documentation in February, no. The only time that I received the document dated for February is in September, when I also received the deadline dated November 1st of 2021. So he sent me essentially all three documents at the same time.
Okay. Does that prompt any other questions from Zoning Board of Appeals?
No.
Mr. Kuhn, Mr. Beveridge, do you have any questions of him at this point in time?
I do not.
All right. And then, Ms. Plowman, that concludes the presentation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. You're shaking your head, yes. And I'll just get that reflected on the record. All right. Mr. Kuhn, would you present the city position, please?
Absolutely, and thank you, Attorney Dietrich. So what I would like to address is really two different arguments. First off is to establish the timeline of events as the applicant has addressed, and then secondly, to dive into the three variance standards and then staff's interpretation as to why each of the three variance standards are not met. So regarding first, the timeline, the chain of events, you know, I started here my tenure with the city on May 13th of 2020, so past discussions between the applicant and the former zoning administrator, discussing the claim by the former zoning administrator that no special approvals were needed for operating a college rental on the property that I personally can speak to, since I wasn't employed with the city at that time. But the, as I mentioned in the staff report, how the chain of events started, at least during my tenure here, started with receiving input from the public as to there being multiple vehicles that are parked down the driveway, that there are multiple individuals residing within the property. And, you know, as the applicant mentioned, you know, I'll be the first to admit, it is difficult to, you know, ascertain whether or not on a given property, the family definition is met. You know, it's not like other potential zoning violations where you take a look at it from the street, from the right-of-way, and it's clear as day, yes, a violation exists, no, it does not. So my process for this, for this situation, like other situations where the family definition was raised, is to ask the individual point-blank, how many unrelated persons are residing within the property, to make that determination as to whether or not the family definition is met, if that property is not already grandfathered in. So based off the feedback that I received from residents near the applicant's property as to concerns about it, I first did some research in the background, first ascertained that this property was not grandfathered in. For being a college rental, as I mentioned, that's actually included on the last page of the agenda packet, page 52 of 52. That shows the sales history, shows the past owners of the property, and actually the past, the property owner previous to the applicant, I personally know of and can attest to that the person who resided there was, the folks who resided there, rather, were a husband, a wife, and their children, thus would meet the family definition requirements of no more two unrelated persons, unless they meet those standards in the zoning code. So knowing that that violation exists, then really the question that I needed to figure out was how much of a compliance window would be given? You know, naturally, in a case like this, there isn't a set document that says for violations of the family definition, you have to give folks, you have to give the applicant, the property owner, so much time. So based on that, I talked to Maria Moore, who's administrative assistant for the Community Development Department, to determine for past practices, how much time was given, and the correspondence that we had stated that the compliance date that was given in past cases was the end of the semester. Now, if, say for example, the violation started near the end of the semester, then we would normally give them a month and a half, two months of time, again, depending on when the violation first happened. So based on that, the determination was made to give them to the end of the semester, specifically May 31st of 2021, and that information was disclosed to the property owner at the time when I had the conversation with him first over the phone call. As the applicant mentioned, during the summer, some of the roommates left. You know, that is something that I took a look at, starting in June, just to make sure, you know, at least from what I can tell from the exterior, are there the same amount of vehicles that are parked on the driveway? You know, that, as I mentioned, is, was part of my justification to determine that that family definition at the time was met. Now, back in September, when school started, staff received additional complaints regarding the family definition potentially being violated, thus was the reason for the additional correspondence with the applicant. So going with the variance standards, if you could go to the next slide, you can see, and listed on page one of the staff report, page 22 of the agenda packet, the three criteria for that, what are the three criteria that a variance applicant must satisfy, the first of which that there's an unnecessary hardship present, the second, that the hardship being claimed is due to physical limitations of the property and is not caused by the applicant's actions, and then the third, you know, is the requested, does a requested variance serve the public's interest? So the first standard is an unnecessary hardship present, and as I mentioned, as you can see on the slide, for a used variance, an unnecessary hardship has to be proven by the applicant that shows that there is no reasonable use for the property currently, and that by granting said variance, that would provide a reasonable use, that would provide a lot of use. So as you can see on the left image of the screen, with this property being zoned, R3, single-family uses and two-family uses are a permitted use within the district. Now with that said, there are minimum performance standards that have to be met for the type of use within the respective district. And within the R3 district, a single-family use needs 5,000 square foot of lot area, two-family use needs 10,000 square feet. Now this property is approximately 8,712 square feet in size, so it wouldn't meet the two-family lot size requirement, but it would meet the one-unit, single-family lot size requirement. but it would meet the one-unit, single-family lot size requirement. So, you know, to answer the question directly, is there a reasonable use for the property? Staff's argument would be that, yes, it's, there is reasonable use for the property. What is it? A single-family use, because it meets the minimum lot size requirements. And then a second part that I'd like to address regarding this variance standard is the notion of the self-created hardship. So within Chapter 23, Section 1, 23, Section 5, rather, of the City's zoning code, that section establishes a zoning board of appeals. So as Attorney Dietrich mentioned, that outlines the process for applying for a variance for an administrative appeal, what are the standards that's to be met pursuant to state statute. And within the staff report in the agenda packet, specifically page 25, it outlines specific scenarios upon which a variance shall not be granted. Now, most of these do relate to floodplain, which does not apply in this case. But the last one, which is highlighted and shown on the screen, says that the requested, that the Zoning Board of Appeals shall not grant a variance for a self-created hardship. Now, it's staff's belief that, you know, upon reviewing the application submitted by the applicant, that the hardship that's being claimed is self-created. Security deposits were obtained by the applicant from their roommates. You know, those were actions that were taken specifically from the, by the applicant to the roommates. You know, if there is a lease agreement, either written or verbal, you know, that would be another form of documentation that would show that relationship between the applicant and the roommates that were created by those two parties. So staff would believe that this variance is self-created. So again, would be a justification not to grant the variance. Now, the second review standard is that, you know, is the hardship that's being claimed due to physical limitations of the property itself? Now, as I already mentioned, it is of sufficient lot size to accommodate a single-family use. But the second performance standard of importance for the R3 district is what's the minimum lot width requirement? Within the R3 district, 45 feet of lot width is required. This property is approximately 66 feet in width. So is this a substandard lot? No, for the reasons that it is of sufficient size to accommodate a single-family use, a single-family residential use, and it is of sufficient lot width. And I also mentioned, included on page 26 of the agenda packet, the setback requirements. Now, this property is unique in that not only do setback requirements of the R3 district apply, but this property is also located within the traditional neighborhood overlay district, which generally speaking, the intent of that overlay district is to allow for more compact development, more of a neighborhood scale type development. So as you can see on, for, within the chart on page 26 of the packet, the existing setbacks of the principal structure do meet the setback requirements of either the R3 district or the traditional neighborhood district. So staff's belief is that not only is a lot non-compliance, but the structure that's located within it is also in compliance with city zoning standards. So within the applicant's application, likewise during his testimony, he did make comment about the two unrelated rule and the grandfathering status and how there's several properties near his that do have more than two unrelated persons that's residing with it. And, you know, to be blunt, that is correct. There are more, there are several properties that exceed that requirement. But again, that is because they're grandfathered in. Now, Chapter 23, Section 1, Sub 18 establishes a non-conforming use language that city staff has to adhere to, has to administer. And essentially, the intent of this section is to state that non-conforming situations can continue, but the intent of this code section is not to prolong its existence. And for the properties that surround his, they're grandfathered in because that's use hasn't been discontinued for 12 consecutive months. Thus, they wouldn't be breaking that non-conforming standard. Now, the case of this, the case of the subject property here, as I mentioned, it's always been a single-family, so, a single-family use that met the two-family unrelated rule. So it wouldn't be subject to those, that non-conforming use regulation. Then the last thing I wanted to touch for this standard is the family definition overall. Now, the family definition is not something that applies to only certain zoning districts here in the city or even certain areas of the city, specifically around campus. This is a family definition that applies universal across the city for all residential uses. So the fact of the matter is, is that this family definition requirement does not apply to any one property or to a smaller share of properties that would warrant said lot be unique in terms of the standards that it has to abide by. And then the last requirement, or the last review standard is, does the requested variance help or harm the public's interest? So, you know, it's, it's my firm belief that receiving feedback from the public is a good indicator to determine whether the requested variance will help or harm their, the public's interest. And there were some comments already made. Likewise, Attorney Dietrich mentioned that there's submittals stating that, stating their stance on the request. But on the slide here shows the purpose and intent of the zoning code. So why is the zoning code established? What is its purpose? What is its intent? And I highlighted the specific sections here that, in my opinion, apply for this case. So first off, does it promote the health, safety, morals, prosperity, aesthetics, and general welfare of the community? Now, this was something that was specifically included within the findings of this, this third review standard. Secondly, population distribution and density. Now, there's a reason why the zoning code has density restrictions, has the family definition requirement. It's to ensure that there's a more equal distribution of fire, of EMS, of public utilities, to ensure that the appropriate city services that are provided are carried across the board equally, equitably, et cetera. And then the last chunk here, to lessen congestion in and promote the safety and efficiency of the streets and highways. So as I mentioned, and as the applicant has mentioned in his testimony, there were multiple non-compliance letters that were sent for parking on the grass. And, you know, it's my belief that, you know, while having more, having five, six, seven vehicles that are parked on the driveway isn't indicative so much as to whether the family definition is or is not met, because naturally, single-family household could have five, six vehicles that's parked in the driveway, just given the circumstances of that household. But it's my belief that the situation where these non-compliance letters that were sent out, that that coincides with the family definition, that there is that parallel, there is that connection as to the violation for parking on the grass with the family definition violation. So, you know, in closing, you know, staff's opinion again is that a, the requested variance be denied based off of the three reasons that I stated at the onset, that unnecessary hardship is not present and is in fact self-created, that the hardship that's being claimed is due to circumstances by the applicant and not due to unique circumstances of the property. And then lastly, that the requested variance, in my opinion, would harm the public interest. So with that, I'll wrap up my testimony. I'd be happy to take any questions that the board may have.
We'll, we'll start, yes. Mr. Plowman, do you have questions?
Um, just one question. Am I allowed to basically object or just question any statements that Adam has made?
I will give you the opportunity for some level of quote rebuttal after this is done.
Okay.
But that's going to be the extent of it. So do you have any questions, Mr. Kuhn?
Not at this time.
Does any board member have any questions, Mr. Kuhn?
How many complaints have you received?
Uh, within the last week or since the start of the...
Since the start.
An exact number I can't give you. I would say, in terms of unique parties, I would say at least six to 10 range. Especially in the last week, I'd say about six, eight unique individuals.
Are these, are these police calls?
Not police calls. It's from citizens who live near the surrounding property or, you know, over the course of the last few days with word of mouth, people became aware that this item was going to be on the agenda and they wanted to speak, provide comment on that.
Well, but they're not, not going after Jordan, or they weren't having a party or something like that. They're not complaints like that. The people are just calling to say they wanted to say something.
So the complaints for the last few days were about their statement either for or against the requested variance. The correspondence that city staff had had, has had prior to the agenda being published were complaints about parking on the grass with there being an overabundance of people and just the overall question of, is the family definition met or not?
Good.
Ish has a question online.
Has he typed it in or does he want to?
He unmuted himself, so I assume he's going to speak. See if that works.
Adam, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, so I listened to what you said. I was wondering how the requested variance actually harms the public interest, looking at the family definition. So for instance, if you have, it said it's suitable for a single family. Now, if you have a single family with eight kids, and they're all teenagers, they all have cars, that would be 10 cars on that driveway. Are they, will they be in violation?
If they're, if they're parking on a hard surface, it would not be in violation, no.
Yeah, but looking at the size of the lot, it's not up to, the size of R3 is R2. So I was just wondering how this harms the public interest? If you have a larger family residing there, and they all have cars?
Yeah, so, no, good question. So one of the comments that I mentioned in the staff report is adequate ingress egress into, into and outside of the property. Now, you know, as the applicant has stated, you know, the driveway, albeit the first admit, is relatively narrow. You know, with that said though, you know, unfortunately, the driveway could not be expanded based off of how our driveway ordinance is structured. You know, as the applicant mentioned, it's too close to the side lot line to accommodate a wider width, nor would a wider width be allowed based off of the dimensions of the attached garage, I believe, that it leads to. But with that said, you know, there is a concern for adequate access in and out of the lot. Now, since the variance application was received, one of the comments, one of the calls that I got, which is actually that one of the documents that I submitted to Attorney Dietrich, is from a former, a former police or fire sergeant here in the city, worked here for the city for several years, and has, in his statement, he mentioned that there were multiple, multiple situations, multiple circumstances in the past where the family definition wasn't met, that it was in violation, and that resulted in issues in terms of having appropriate EMS calls being administered, being brought to the property in the event of any emergency, in the event of any fires, or police actions that need to be responded to. That having that access into the property can be, can be difficult, given that. So that was one of the justifications, again, hearing feedback from the public, what their comments were as to whether or not it would serve their public interest.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions from zoning board members? I do. In your presentation, Mr. Kuhn, on the administrative report, you state on page one, which is page 22 of 52, last, on your finding the fact, you're stating that the Zoning Board of Appeals shall review any variance requests subject to the review standards outlined in Chapter 2305 of the City's zoning code. Did you rely upon strictly the City's zoning code in writing your administrative staff report?
As far as, was I the sole person who crafted the staff report?
No, when, when you crafted it, did you basically use 2305 as the basis of your report?
Correct.
Did you use the state statute?
Correct. I did use certain sections of the state statute, specifically as it relates to what constitutes an unreasonable use of the property.
Which version of the state statute did you use? Did you use the one that is quoted in Section 2305 of the city ordinance?
The specific state statute section that I can't recall. Exact section, the section that I was looking at in relation to what they, in relation to how they define an unreasonable use.
The thing, the thing I'm driving at is this, the state's, or correction, the city's zoning code, Chapter 23 of the city ordinance, quotes a 1979 version of the state statute, 6223, par. 7, par. 1. And there is a version that came out. Obviously, you could not have used the most recent version because it was only approved by the legislature and the state on November 1st of this year. But I was just wondering where, you know. I see nothing wrong in your staff report. You know, I didn't find anything that, that did not track with the current version of the statute. But I was just concerned about the basis of your report. I might have one other question, too. That's it. I just, because 23.05, it has a whole, you know, a lot of quotes from 2305. And again, Chapter 23, it was written back in 1979. Thank you. Any other questions from the Zoning Board of Appeals members? Mr. Kuhn, I have to ask a question to clarify the record. There's been statements here that the exhibit, the February correspondence, which is Exhibit 4, was not, that Mr. Plowman didn't receive that. Do you have any knowledge about that document?
So that document was the date that was included on the packet. That was the day that the letter was sent out. That was included in the envelope, ultimately as to USPS transporting that document, or transporting the letter to the applicant that I personally can't speak to. But, you know, I can state that that applicant, or that that letter...
The February 12 one.
Right.
I mean, I think what, what happened here is you inserted the February 12, the February 12 one maybe had been included in the September 16 correspondence because you were, you refer in your letter... But, but again, at this juncture, we don't have any, we don't have any additional background regarding the, the February letter, but your testimony is that it was, it was properly postage and sent out on that date.
Correct. The only document that would have been in that envelope was that document. And as you mentioned, the reason that I included that in the subsequent letter is just for reference, for since that was addressed.
Okay. Any other questions from the zoning board? Mr. Plomin, you had kind of, or Mr. Beveridge, any questions?
I have one question for Mr. Kuhn.
Or maybe comment.
I just actually have a question for Mr. Kuhn at this point. You had mentioned a phone call with Mr. Plomin in which you informed him of the single-family zoning and associated occupancy limits. When did that call occur, again?
That would have been the same day that that email was sent by me, that's included in the packet. Let me just quick find the date, the timestamp. That email was sent on November, was sent on Friday, February 12, 2021. The timestamp was 11:32 a.m. And that is on page 49 of 52 of the packet.
Thank you.
If I have, if I may include one additional comment, too, if it's.
Before, before we do that, you're referring to, okay, this, this is the, the third page of exhibit six, and I'm going to mark this third page, which is a separate email, as exhibit 6A for our discussions. And you're referring, that's a, that's an email that you sent to Ryan.
Correct.
Okay. That wasn't sent to Mr. Plomin, though.
That was not sent to, I did not have his email.
Thank you. Mr. Beveridge?
If I have.
Let me, let me, Mr. Beveridge, you have any other questions? No. Okay, go ahead, please.
So, I just have one comment that I'd like to address, too, just since a member where mentioned that, or asked that in the applicant's testimony as to permits, whether or not permits were obtained for the intended improvements that the applicant included in the, in his application submittal. Upon receipt of the application, I sent, I forwarded that receipt over to, again, Maria Moore, the administrative assistant here for the community development department, since she was the person who handled the transmitting of fee information to the applicant to pay for the variance request. Now, upon receipt of that application, she did notice multiple instances where permits or work was done without a permit. One of them I know specifically was the water heater and the addition of the bathroom, I believe, on the first or second floor. The reason why no action has been taken at this time regarding any work without permits being letter, work without permits, non-compliance letters being sent out, is the amount of fees that would be associated with the subsequent attainment of a permit would depend in large part as to the actions, the conclusions of this board. Now, I can't speak so much as to the fees, but essentially, if it is treated as a college rental, it's subject to different fee requirements for permits versus if it was used for a single-family private dwelling. So, you know, upon correspondence with Ms. Moore, you know, that was something where upon confirmation of the decision of this board up here tonight, you know, then proper channels would be taken care of, or would be taken care of as far as the work without permits. I just wanted to address that since that was brought up.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Beveridge?
I certainly expect that there's going to be an opportunity for, for me to make some, some arguments here based on the law and what's been testified to. I'm just curious as to what phase.
Well, okay, if that's what you wish to do, I'm going to ask, I'm going to first give Mr. Plomin an opportunity to make what I would characterize as rebuttal slash closing statements. Then you're going to have an opportunity for closing statements, then we'll be, we'll be done. And I would encourage both of you that they be brief. So, Mr. Plomin, with closing statements, and you said you wanted to offer some things, kind of in response.
First of all, addressing the permits, my understanding, like the chair mentioned, it is up to the contractor to pull the permit, correct?
Well, no, you can't ask him questions.
Furthermore, you know, if, I worked with Excel Plumbing for the water heater, it, essentially, it should be up to them to pull the permit. As far as the bathroom remodel, I worked with another company that I know, he is a friend from my high school, but he also runs a licensed company. So, to my knowledge of whether he pulled the permit or not, that's up to him. I'll have to ensure that he did or not. But, other than that, I did want to comment on the whole issue of public interest, if I'm able to go back and argue against that. Like Mr. O'Dogba said, if a family, a single family, they're all related, obviously, are living in this house, similar to what I'm doing, and they're a large family that has six to seven cars, like Mr. O'Dogba mentioned, how is that any different? In terms of, you know, like you stated with the EMS and the fire, how is that any different? And how does it make it okay since they're related? It is still the same situation where they can't access the property, but because they're all family members, that makes it okay? It's the same exact situation. So, I'm, I guess I'm questioning the difference between that.
Anything else?
Regarding the February letter, you know, I, again, as I testified, I did not receive anything. If I did, obviously, this appeal process would have been happening way sooner. I'm, I'm also questioning, like you said, you don't have any other background of the letter dated February 12, 2021. If, if a document of this importance was necessary for me to bring my property into compliance, why was it not sent through certified mail? And why was there no confirmation of receipt that I got it? And also, if he was emailing Ryan Kornowski on the whole situation, you know, it would have been simple enough to ask me for my email during that conversation on the phone. If, you know, if that's all it took, that's the simplest thing that could have been done to avoid this whole situation in general, is him simply requesting my email, and then I have a surefire way of receiving this document that I was supposed to receive in February. That was not done. I never received a copy of it, nor on my email or physically. So, I'll leave it at that. I, I didn't get any warning of the May 31, 2021. And that's what essentially led to the following of now we're in the situation where I continued to do what I was doing before, and now I've been put in the situation of he gave me the deadline of November 1st of 2021, when I received it in the middle of September. That's a month and a half to boot my roommates out and have them find a place to live. And essentially, what the zoning administrator said was, he felt that that was an appropriate amount of time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Beveridge?
So, there were some, some comments earlier about if this is, I believe it was from Mr. Plomin's father, saying, if this is just a black and white matter about applying the law, then why do we have this appeal process? And there's a very direct answer for that, which is only this board can grant a variance. The city staff, by law, cannot grant a variance. So, even if there was a case where the city staff was recommending that the variance be granted, it would still be necessary to have this process in order for that to happen. And speaking to the legal issues, you know, certainly we, there are a lot of terms being thrown around here, but we have to remember that, you know, certain words and phrases that have common vernacular meanings can have slightly or drastically different meanings when we're talking about legal issues. Now, for starters, obviously, we, we're talking about hardship, we're talking about reasonable use, and we need to, we need to be clear about what those things mean here. And we also need to be clear about what this, this process is not about. And it's, it's not about his intent. It's not about whether he intentionally violated an ordinance. We certainly don't think that's the case. It's not about his intent for the future of the property, or whether he's a good neighbor, and it certainly sounds like he is, or his truthfulness of city staff. I don't think anybody questions that he's been very open and honest about everything. The improvements, his personal occupancy of the house, et cetera, et cetera. It's about these, these legal standards. And when we're talking about the legal history of use variances versus area variances, the courts have had a lot of action on that in the last two decades. And some of the language that was used when the, where the brief and former standards were established, for a brief period of time, the courts in Wisconsin applied the same standard to area variances that they did, that they do currently to use variances, which is that you have to be able to show that you have no reasonable use of the property at all unless you are granted this area variance. You know, and an area variance could be, give me a 12-inch relief on a setback so I can, you know, build, build a garage or whatever it is. And the courts, I think rightfully, identified that as being pretty draconian. In fact, there's, there's some decisions where specifically that word is used. But as you look through the case history, where the courts walk back from doing it that way, they do mention in almost every, every single case, make no mistake, we are not saying that we need to adjust the standards for use variances, because a use variance has potentially so much more of a drastic effect on the overall character of a neighborhood. And, you know, this, you know, Mr. Plomin looked around the neighborhood and said, there, there are these other rooming houses here. What's the big deal? Which is not an unreasonable conclusion to reach if, if you're not immersed in some of this stuff. But ultimately, like Ryan mentioned, the ultimate goal of zoning, when you have non-conforming legal uses, is for those to eventually come into, into compliance. And we, what we, when we created the zoning code, you know, there were houses that were being used for all kinds of things, and just by law, you can't rip away somebody's use by a change in the zoning code. So, that's where the, the quote grandfathering comes in. But the idea is that eventually, things will change to single-family uses as they're identified in the code there. Now, speaking about the zoning code itself, you know, it's a piece of policy. It's the lawmakers in the city saying, this is how we'd like things to run. This is how we'd like these land uses to, to, to look on the ground. And one of the elements that courts mention is the idea of a community plan. And I'm going to quote from, this is from State versus Outagamy County Board of Adjustment. This is from 2001. The court said, I conclude that unnecessary hardship for purposes of a use variance is established when it is shown that no reasonable use of the property is feasible without a variance, et cetera, et cetera. The reasons, however, this is later stating for either a use or an area variance, says the reasons for granting either type of variance must be substantial and not contrary to the public interest or detrimental to the community plan. And I think that community plan language is important here. This specific neighborhood in the city, with regards to the existing grandfathered rooming houses, has been the subject of a lot of conversation over the last 10 to 15 years amongst council, city staff, for what can we do to speed up the process of these coming into compliance? What can we do to encourage people to move families back into these homes, to convert them back into single-family usage? We've looked at grant programs. We've looked at all kinds of different options. So, the, the community plan here is, I'd say, even more evident than it would be in some other neighborhoods where they have zoning classifications but haven't received that same level of discussion amongst council members and city staff. So, to, to allow a property that's already in that stat, in that state of being used actually for single-family occupation, to go back permanently, make no mistake, you granted a, a use variance, it is, it is permanent, would be absolutely contrary to the community plan. And I believe the community plan does represent the public interest. It's what the elected members of the local legislature have decided on behalf of their constituents. Now, I'm going to speak just a little bit more here regarding the hardship element. When you look at hardship, as that phrase is used in zoning, you do have this reference to physical aspects of the property, and we heard that mentioned a couple times. Now, normally, you'd be thinking of like a triangular lot with some crazy topography or a river running through it, something that makes it so that it is impossible to comply with usually a setback, some type of area variance. And it just renders it totally useless. That's the idea with appeals and zoning, is to make sure that we don't end up with land that's just useless, even though you could construct something there. It's not a wetland or anything like that. And we heard some comments from Mr. Plomin, saying that without this variance, he would not be able to continue improving the property. He would not be able to reasonably occupy a six-bedroom house alone. But the idea of hardship is not about the particular circumstance of the person who owns it at the time and is applying for the variance. It's about what the property could be used for in general by a, just a, an example of an owner. And here, we know what this can be used for. It can be used as a single-family home. That's how it had been used since its construction. And with regards to the hardship of the tenants, I sympathize with that hugely. It, it is a really bad situation. Nobody's denying that. But ultimately, the hardship of the tenants having to respond to the enforcement of the zoning code as it's written, ultimately is not something that, that the law takes into consideration when evaluating whether there is a hardship. And my very last comment here is that we heard some, some comments suggesting, well, what is the detriment to the public interest, just of this one property, of having a few extra cars? But I think when you're evaluating the public interest in a case like this, you have to think about not so much, what is the impact of this one particular example of it? But what would this represent if this were to become, was essentially a policy? Like, essentially, we're going to create a policy that says, if you buy a home that is not, not zoned for multi-family occupancy, but you live in it personally, and you make improvements to it, then you can move in as many people as would be allowed under the building code with regards to bedrooms and egress and all that stuff. That, that, I think, is not a policy that would be supported. In fact, we just heard a lot of community outrage, I would, I would fairly say, about the idea of creating the, the accessory dwelling unit code to allow people to put a very small apartment above a, an accessory building. People were strongly opposed to that in, in a lot of cases. And especially here, you know, we, we've been, we've been told that the uniqueness of the property is that it has many bedrooms and it's located close to the campus. Well, that describes a lot of properties. In fact, it describes a huge amount of the most historic, remarkable properties we have in that neighborhood. And I think to suggest that we can make this exception here, well, why wouldn't you feel obligated to make that same exception for anyone else who does the same thing with any one of those other homes? And I think that's the public interest, is in avoiding that proliferation of expanded use and additional traffic and people. Thank you.
Zoning Board of Appeals members, that concludes the hearing process for consideration of this request. We do have this question of several written statements that were provided at the start of the proceedings. We've had some discussion and testimony about, quote, complaints. But the, the, the call for a, a public hearing is not part of the process under the state statutes. I don't have, I have copies of, of two of the statements. The others, I was not able to get copies for. It's kind of up to the zoning board of appeals whether you want to read these and consider them. They are certainly provided as information, but they're not directly provided by either side in this case. Yes?
I would like to have access to all of them that were provided. I mean, these are from people who live nearby, and I would like to know what their thoughts are.
Right. I would ask that a motion be made. I would ask that a motion be made to allow for that.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion, motion made to put the, is it two of the three, or all three of them?
We're going to give two, and then I have two others that I'll just, I'll only be able to pass around one copy for people to read. They're very short.
Oh. Okay. Motion, motion made by Lynn Markham to put those on the record so that we can inspect them during our deliberations, seconded by Day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I would like to add in to this, by this motion being made, it may delay the outcome of this commission's findings, because Ishmael Ogdeba will not have, unless we can electronically give that other member access to these records.
I could take photos of him and send him to him.
Yeah, that, that, that would be, I don't know, some of them are three, four pages long.
As it does, it, you know, it says-
And get a number for him.
In our Zoning Board of Appeals Procedure Guidelines, you know, besides a tie vote, a matter voted on shall remain open pending recess by the board. Such recess, any member who was absent from the meeting will be provided. They're kind of absent because they're remote, and they should be entered into the record on matter and an audio or video recording of the proceeding. That member shall have adequate amount of time to review such materials following that review. The board shall reconvene with the previously absent member present.
If, if there's a tie vote.
But that, yeah, it is if there's a tie vote.
I don't think he's absent.
Actually, they're, these aren't that long.
Okay.
That we probably could, could do that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold for a moment the-
Good idea.
-we don't have copies.
Yeah. We can see the same thing or see.
We, we actually, I think it was two pages or whatever it was. So.
Thank you.
Probably could.
Ryan, do you have a number or a way I can contact him?
I, I can email the photos to Ish.
Oh, okay, great.
So Ish, if you're- Yeah, if you're listening, Ish, and I hope you are. I would, I'm going to send them to your EWSP email.
All right, thanks.
Just need the copies.
Yeah, you can, yeah, sorry. All right.
Do this, the- Okay, thank you.
While you're doing that, in that decision having been made by the Zoning Board of Appeals to consider these items, it would now be appropriate for the Zoning Board of Appeals to consider a motion to adjourn in a closed session to deliberate regarding the presentation of information and the request for the variance. And I, I would say to the members of the public that are here and to the parties that are here, I don't know how long the deliberations will, will take place. We have calendared on the agenda for reconvening in the open session to announce any decision. So you're certainly welcome to wait outside the room. If it runs any period of time, I may notify you that we're not going to make a decision tonight. So we'll let you know on that.
Yeah, Lynn, Lynn's got a comment.
I have a comment on this. There's no requirement for boards of appeal to go into closed session. I think that local government operates best when it's transparent. I see no reason to go into closed session. I understand we have you here as counsel, and if you feel that we're going down a road that is legally indefensible, you can tell us so, you know, whether we're an open session or a closed session. So that's my thought.
Yeah, I, and, and I'll comment that the policy of, of discussion in, in open session and transparency and public information is all very wise and appropriate. There is another consideration in these matters, which is when you're conferring with legal counsel who's rendering advice regarding a matter, and when you're deliberating about information that's been provided, typically, you would like to do that in closed session, so you're, have the opportunity for a discussion with counsel about the case that's been presented. So it's up to the board. So it would be appropriate for a motion.
I just make a quick comment, and I'm ready for a motion.
Go, go ahead, Bob.
If, if a member votes no to go in closed session, that would be the vote. You know, if, if a majority votes no, then we would not go into closed session. So I, I would move that we adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.5, Part N1, Part N E, deliberating concerning a case which is the subject of any judicial or quasi-judicial trial or hearing before the government body on the following. Deliberating on a request from Jordan Plomin for a use variance to exceed the allowed number of unrelated persons residing within the single-family residential use at 1208 Reserve Street, Stevens Point, and the parcel identif, ID is identified in the packet.
Motion made by Commissioner Ware to move into closed session. Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor to move into closed session, say aye.
It must be a roll call.
Yeah, we would have to do it by roll call. Roll call vote? Yeah. Okay. Mr. Dietrich, could you take a roll call on it?
Yeah, George?
Aye.
Is it?
Gracia.
Gracia, okay.
Aye.
Lynn?
No.
Ishmael?
No.
I didn't hear, was that yes?
No.
No. And Bob?
Aye.
The vote is three to two, so the board would convene in the closed session. We have passed a motion to reconvene into open session, and the Zoning Board of Appeals is going to consider a motion. I'll turn it over to the board for its statements, and we'll proceed from there.
Lynn, did you want to make a motion?
I will. So the Zoning Board of Appeals is only allowed to grant a variance if the three legal standards are all met. So the first legal standard is unnecessary hardship, and for a use variance, unnecessary hardship exists only if the applicant shows that they have no reasonable use of the property without the variance. In this case, the applicant has reasonable use of the, of the property as a single-family residence. The second standard is the hardship has to be due to unique physical limitations of the property. This property is not unique. It meets the lot standards in terms of area and width. Also, there's nothing unique in terms of physical limitations, steep slopes, wetlands that prevent building or occupying the home. The third standard is the variance will not harm the public interest. There have been some concerns about how the occupants of this property are impacting neighbors. So I think it could harm the public interest, and like the city attorney said, it's also based on cumulative impact in terms of if we let other similarly R3-zoned properties become college rentals, it wouldn't just be one, it would be a number of them in that neighborhood. Okay. We did hear the concerns about college students not having a place to live or being required to move immediately, and for that reason, well, first, so we deny the variance because the standards were not met, and we make the recommendation, or I make the recommendation, that staff does not move forward with enforcement until the end of December of this year, so that students have a chance to find a new place to live prior to needing to move.
I would second the motion.
Motion, motion made by Markham, seconded by Ware. All in favor, say aye.
I'm gonna have the roll call.
All roll call?
You, you wouldn't actually have to. George?
Aye.
Gracia?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Ishmael?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
All voted yes, the motion passes. There's nothing more for us to consider. By the way, part of the motion is you've directed that council prepare the appropriate form for submittal of the final decision to the zoning department. That's part of the motion.
Yes.
So at this juncture, a motion to adjourn would be appropriate.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Meeting is adjourned at 19/26/11/2021. Thanks for all for coming, have a happy holiday, and safe travels or safe hunting if you're going out.